All the meeting to order. Note that Paul Board is excused, Mark Herman is excused, Daniel will be seated in Paul's place.
My fault.
I probably spent our day with him.
We don't have any meeting minutes. But let's pass over that. It's your motion. Second.
Second.
Call in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Carol, is this something you can do with it?
Am I?
Oh, is it like the last zone?
There's bad connection somewhere.
It's clear a minute ago.
Put some print on it. Like, that's some printed sheet on the deck.
Our hand? Oh, there we go. What's? Focus itself.
I'm about to focus it.
That was magic.
That's the question. The wave of the hand.
First item, Andrew Drew Goddard, DBA, Hopey Moon Housing LLC, seeking voluntary law and merger of part of the commercial of the proposed proposal presented on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Observe site plan review approvals to create a mixed-use commercial space mixed with restricted multifamily residential housing. Once merged, three parcels in one, one thirty-nine Main Street map, one one eight block fifty point six acres, one forty-one Main Street map, one one eight block fifty-one, four two acres, church street land only map, one one eight block two point two acres. Proposal request for approval of request for approval or request for voluntary law and merger to merge all three adjacent lots to create one larger lot total of twenty-six thousand four hundred fifteen square feet, four point six one acres. So pretty standard items. Put in the building, even merge in, merge in three lots.
Everything we have from the board to do it.
That law. Says the board shall approve it as long as it doesn't create a non-performing lot.
It's not performing to the rooftop.
What's that?
To increase lots to make it more non-performing, but when you tear them down, then it will be a non-performing lot. The merger, we didn't have to do that.
Well, he's, he's requested, so we're going, we're going to consider it. Does he want any questions? I don't have to have any public comment on this. Make a motion to approve the lot merger.
Second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anyone opposed?
Well, I don't think we're playing.
I already heard a yes, but you go.
What would happen if we said no? Yeah. Think about it.
Delia Sullivan and Kevin Sullivan, DBA, D P Properties LLC, own forty-seven school street, map one one three lot one one two. On the front portion of the lot is four bedroom, two full bathroom, single family home. The lot is separated into by Henry Lane and Alley. On the other side of Henry Lane, in the back of the lot, is detached garage, three hundred and eighty square feet. Owners would like to remove detached garage located on the other side of Henry Lane's house and replace it with a new detached garage, detached accessory apartment above the garage. Access is an issue as Henry Lane is not a class five road, even clearly a class six. Henry Lane is a back alley with a special legal history. It is minimally filed by the town. Other than snowplowing, the town does not maintain Henry.
Town, folks, town paid it.
Mm-hmm.
That road, that lane has been used by the town, the people up there own Henry Lane. This started the lot too with, with, yeah, Korean.
Yeah.
But way back in the late eighties, early nineties. They wanted the town, wanted its kid doing it then. But the water sewer line goes right down Henry Lane. And they took it over, put the sewer line in. But therefore, the town really owns it because sewer line's under it.
There's a sewer line under Henry Lane?
Yeah, the cake went in front, but they got the whole creek.
Peril, young?
Peril to it.
Yeah, my sewer goes out.
Yeah, it was built on School Street.
Go ahead.
I talked to Nate today. He said the water line goes under the middle of the road and sewer line comes in from School Street.
The sewer line is everywhere. Well.
Nate said, so there's a water line under Henry Lane that the town
Well, you had a back.
The town has plowed that one, plowed it, and they paved it. So there's debate on who owns
Anytime.
the street, but the sewer, he says, comes from School Street.
Very true. They did that over nineteen fifty-nine.
Because I think Emerson.
But you think about. How did your water go to School Street?
Right on the front of the house, too, it was, yeah.
Yeah, the sewer.
Yeah, because my curb stop is right by my mailbox.
And we had, my grandmother's trailer, it was back in woman dead, and we had to dig all the way to School Street, put water and sewer in.
But there is a water line in that
Must not be given up.
number sixty-nine on on a map that I found today.
Anyway, when your packets are, you know, the information about the street, you know, the
Got your whole
Gardner and Hilton, seven thirty seven, I mean.
Can I ask what?
Because do I? Ma'am?
Can we have a, 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 a new project?
Would you?
You have this information?
I don't know what, what, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Question for her.
Oh, I mean, decisions aren't made.
I mean, the decisions are already made. I'm assuming it's okay, but this is the packet. It says confidential and privileged and all that stuff. I assume that it's okay.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I don't think it isn't to withhold that.
Could the garage be part of the, your, your apartment?
Yes, the, the apartment would be above the garage.
If I remember correctly, the planning authority has done case like this before. Would you allow to have an accessory apartment to your property?
Oh, we're not in the building.
Can I fit it, please? Yeah, we got it. This is for your own benefit, for your benefit, not mine. There is an ordinance saying that you can put a tax building, you can put a middle apartment on your building. But the DBA has time passed. You should put it in the back of the building, not a tax, because circumstance. Your place, you wouldn't be able to do it in a add on to it, just block the street.
Right.
And too close to the front. So this is something to think about. One thing we're sure it is good. The people technically be calling it a law, I understand. How many, how many square feet?
I don't know. Depends on how big you let it go, but um whatever is conforming to the setback. Um, I think.
And also you get a your accessory property lot is nine hundred square feet, am I right?
So.
Probably a grand unit, yeah, right. But that would have been big for the apartment.
What?
That would be, that would be pretty big, but it's, it's definitely about.
Well, it's not, it's going to be a rental. It's, it's
I know it's.
The, the home, I'm not, I don't live in the home. Owned by D and K property. I, that, it owns that. Forty-seven school is pretty. And a condo in Hampton, that all of it. I'm selling a condo in Hampton and I want to put money into Lincoln apartment here. So it is, it would be a affordable rent.
The whole lot would be a rental.
Not, not a, um
Not a home in a
No, a long-term rental, not everything. Right now, I rent to a local woman and two children on forty-seven School Street.
You see Paul's goat running around?
Hmm?
Paul, Paul Burke, Paul Burke go.
So the existing garage is right on the, on the setback northwest corner. And I would like to build something big enough that it's a decent apartment, possibly a two-bedroom, maybe one-bedroom. Um, two or three-car garage underneath, going the long way, so that when you drive by, it's twenty-eight feet or whatever I can get away with, you know, at about forty feet.
So you didn't look at that many, how much square footage which you need to construct?
Yeah, I, it says that I can't cover more than sixty percent, and from what I've seen, this size wouldn't encompass more than sixty percent of that half block.
You have to meet all the setbacks.
Within setbacks, yeah.
Is that including parking spaces?
There'd be three parking spaces in the garage and there'd be a driveway downside.
How about with it?
What's that, Carol?
Rentals on, on these lots or any other lots.
May I say?
So, so I, I think Henry Lane, all of those back lots, and then you go over to, um, you know, Nora Parent and Gavoni and the other ones, Corbell. Why couldn't all of them take their back lot and turn them into Airbnbs?
Thing reason that they could take, they should take and turn them into accessory dwelling units and rent them to locals. That was. I've been wanting to happen for a long time in this town.
No, no, I'm saying you, I'm saying.
I, I, I know. I understand where you're coming from, but on the same, same idea, all the, all those little garages could become nice little studios for workers in town. It's called density. And you let, you're letting the whole, the, the apartment building go into the setbacks. Just last week, they go five feet. But there's gonna be a lot more traffic going in up there. I, I'm just saying, it's, it's, I think it's bad for the town, but, for you to say, we're not gonna allow all these little accessory dwellings to pop up. Because that's, that's the future of the village.
As long as we're able, there's eight foot road going in. Can be a lot of people backing up, turning around and cutting. If you have long, your house is a street, it's the same thing. Or we can ride it back and turn it, turn an Airbnb with eight foot right, eight foot road. Pretty tight.
So in order, sorry, for the apartment or the garage to be put in here, and she couldn't count, the road itself as usable space, and are you, I'm concerned, that's, that's what the drawing is.
Henry Lane is marked on that drawing where it says forty seven, this one. Yeah, right, the back lot is bigger than the front lot. So the setbacks will be met.
I mean, I don't think it's a question of usable space, I think it's more of an issue. Road, alley, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, and I know, but, but from living there on that road, when, where the guys were living there before with their girlfriends, they had parked on.
Yeah, and they were parking in front of the house and in front of the garage, and it was really tight. Yeah, because the gar- that garage is set too close to the road. It's right on the road, if I do this. The driveway goes down the side and we're parked underneath, it eliminates that problem. Right now, I could be renting that house, I could rent five, at the five bedroom house. I could be getting three thousand dollars a month, and it's, it's workers at home. There would be six cars there every night. I don't do that.
I think that's your prerogative.
Does that change the allowance for the parking?
It actually isn't four then, it's three upstairs one then.
I mean.
I think we ought to buy a cheap boy.
What?
Why?
That, you know, our apartment catches on fire, how are they gonna get a fire truck?
How, what about the trailer? That trailer catches on fire?
This is something new.
Yeah, I think the two previous, or the one previous one that's there now, and the one that used to be there were predated zone. So there was no board like this to, to, they just went on.
It's another trailer, it's a modular home.
Yeah, but behind your old house, wasn't that a trailer?
Oh, it's gone.
I, I know it's gone, that's right, that a previous one that was there. Is that a trailer?
My grandmother's trailer. That was a trailer trailer.
It's trail. Yeah, okay.
But, um, I'm just thinking, what, during Emerson's fountain? We dug around, we dug across the road, I think we looked it in around Emerson's. Get her water. Remember, bikes going down through their road, we did the same thing for my grandmother's trailer, we dug across, we had to go all the way to school street. I don't know what's, that water line.
It's right here.
That doesn't matter, that's, that does hurt.
Doesn't make any sense though.
A fire truck can go easily down around from Lex's house, be right there. And it's wider there because they have huge driveway there, right up against the road.
Presley, they could build on that property at a, at some time, can't they?
You have to use one of those stuff, problems here, to do a, um, attached.
Detached accessory.
Sure, acknowledge that, she doesn't have to be there.
Yeah, I, I understand, I need to get a variance for that, I, but if I actually get a variance for something else, or if I have to go to the state and ask them, permission, or, or appeal it, I, I will. Because I know that the state wants New Hampshire to build more housing for locals. And that is what, if you, you're gonna kick yourself in the foot.
It's not the same thing about, everybody lives in that street. Road's only eight foot wide, roadways is what really troubles me. Everyone up there did the same thing you're doing, that'd be a very congested, tight neighborhood. And that'd be a pretty safe problem with the kids running up and down, nobody else agrees with them.
Well, the other option is I could do a driveway all along the side that cuts right across Henry Lane to go to the back. But I wouldn't have to use Henry Lane, use school street.
Think township passed an order, no more cuts on school street. No, it's not due here tonight, but.
There is no car cut in front of my home.
I know, but you'd have to go right through it.
It's not on that whole side, on that whole side of the street. So it's meant to be driven up, Henry Lane is meant to be driven up with an access road to those houses. Otherwise, they wouldn't put driveway, right, driveways and on school street.
The only problem I see with this, is, is the butters. If the butters don't care what, I mean, what's the big deal?
Well, I mean, but it's not getting notified this, because it doesn't have to come with site plan review.
But I think if it, if it, if it came before site plan and review, then a butters would be notified. If there's, and if there's any issue with it, well, if we could deal with it at that time. And if goes to site plan review, then the fire chief could take a look at it. But, I mean, I, I don't see a law, I, I agree with what she's saying about having the extra apartments there, I mean, not.
It doesn't trigger the site plan review, but it does trigger CBA, which is notified and the butters get notified.
Well, that's great.
So, so.
You could do it that way as well.
But then, then what about?
She have to, the ZBA first.
So, if I.
So, what, what criteria is she not me- meaning?
That list of roads where you can issue man's permits.
There's no point that you're not trying to plot five a better road.
It's, it's, it must be considered an emergency lane. Probably what.
School street, I'm asking for an accessory dwelling in the back of the school street property. So that road really doesn't come into play because my frontage is on school street. This lot is school street, I'm asking to put a detached garage on the back lane. Because that's where the lane goes, and I'm telling you, I'm gonna put it within a set, a setback, but really, there's no setback, because the frontage of that is on, on school street, I could actually put that garage where it is now and make it bigger.
One other thing is that, you know, she has two tracks, and so do lots of other people. All this, um. Okay, so this is only the ones that we're aware of, maybe it could be the whole model. So you make a decision about this one. Okay, see where all these tips are, they're here. This goes made up there, two D's. This one has two D's, this one has three D's. One, two, three, this one has two D's, this one has three, this is.
Can I ask a question, if I do go, if I do ask for a variance for an accessory dwelling, uh, well, an apartment over a garage, it's not really an accessory dwelling, it's gonna be bigger than that.
They have, oh, I see, yeah.
What I'm asking now is to, to renovate an existing garage on the school street property to, and make it a garage and an apartment.
Well, you're explaining not really rent, right?
Did she ask for a waiver from the planning board?
But if you consider, you consider the lot, the lot, the rest is school street. And I'm not asking to split up a lot like this, at all, ever.
Yeah, anyways.
Right.
Let's try to deal with the issue and not what ifs.
Could she ask for a waiver from the planning boards, like we do over there?
Yeah, because it's so separate people out.
Yeah, I do need someone else to be interested in doing.
She's still gonna have to go to ZBA.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, s- says here, she just said go to the ZBA for waiver, if we decide that she needs that, build on that.
She needs the.
I'm talking about to the. The issue presses whether he can build on that road without a, a variance or waiver, et cetera.
Here's, here's my thought. If, if this were the only lot like this, absolutely, I would love to see more residential, long-term housing, we need it badly. And, and this, you know, one more car going down Henry Lane is not gonna, no one's gonna notice, one more vehicle. In the broader picture, we can't, if we allow someone to build an accessory dwelling unit anywhere, they can rent it out as an Airbnb. So, what I'm afraid is we're gonna say yes, and we're gonna get, one more apartment in this town and twenty more Airbnbs. Okay, as everybody else says, oh, I'll fix up my garage, I mean, I know what Airbnbs do, um, you know, whatever cost we put in the water and sewer, they'd, they'd get that, that back in, in a summer. Um, and, and, you know, you know, theoretically, every, every lot on Waldo Lane, and again, Gavoni and Nora Parent, all those streets could become. You know.
They could also become accessory dwelling units, which would be good for town.
North of Airbnbs, I think. You can do either, you could do either, so. I get that, okay. It's the job of the town to inform residents that they can do these, these accessory dwellings, they don't have to be Airbnbs. And maybe that's what this town needs.
Biggest problem area, also the houses already owned by other state, so they're gonna maximize their profit.
Well, how do you fix that? With zoning.
Zoning.
Okay? This, this board rejected a discussion on having a, having a discussion on restricting, um, Airbnbs from, from the general residential and rural residential areas.
Say that if you push it back on us.
Yeah. No, I was saying that we've rejected that, so that, that opens it up, so that all these other people can, the only who's gonna do the right thing. Okay, twenty more people are gonna use.
Can I ask why you care if they put an Airbnb instead of a, I mean, at, at this, at this stage of the game in the town of Lincoln, you're actually gonna,
Honestly disturbs the community, you know, surrounding an Airbnb, because an Airbnb typically is short-term rental. They have less vested, they come up and they party, they trash, they speed travel.
If you're grouping people, that's not fair.
There are four Airbnbs on my street.
I live next door.
The, the whole Coolidge Place condos is all Airbnbs, and my neighborhood has not been quieter since. It's awesome, nobody's ever there, and when they're there, they're in bed by ten o'clock, I've never had one problem, never. And I'm surrounded by them.
No matter what you do.
I'm surrounded by them, and I have not had a problem.
Well.
That's what the cops take care of with this problem.
Well, that's right, so that's my opinion, it's a law enforcement matter.
Tell me I can't do something because you don't want something else. It, it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, I think the problem with it is that. People are afraid of Airbnbs, and I don't know why, this town has so many in, I mean, why we, why would we stop now?
I, I just.
Why do you value somebody's property because they can't build an Airbnb, that's who I look at it.
Well, I don't know, I mean, you know, the, the horse is on the barn here, you know, it, it's been on the barn for, forever. You know, I mean, I, I didn't like Airbnbs at first, but I've got one beside me, and I gotta tell you, it doesn't bother me. You know, I mean, it's, and I'd be a person that would bother, but it doesn't, you know, the.
If they, if they, we can't differentiate Airbnb and a lot of rental.
And I don't think we should. You know, it, that is a good look at, maybe, maybe more, maybe more Airbnbs will help. Other rentals free up, the other place free up.
That's why we're discussing it.
I, I understand, but I don't think that someone that wants to do the right thing should be told no, because they're afraid that, other people are gonna do the wrong thing, that has nothing to do with me, that's.
And we have to go by what the old town, what does it say?
I understand. I understand, but what I'm saying is, I think, from what you're telling me, I, and what I've heard, I can go to the zoning board and ask for a variance, to put a two, two, two-bedroom apartment and a three-car garage on my house that is on school street.
You can't because you wouldn't meet the setback.
Is on school street. So what I'm saying, I wanna put a garage and an apartment in my backyard. The only, the only reason I'm here is because I was trying to use Henry Lane as the street. Well, if you're saying that's not a street, I'm gonna use school street as a street.
I, I think Henry Lane's a street, I think it's an emergency lane, it has to be considered as such.
Either way. I know I need a variance either way. But I'm trying to figure out how, what I have to ask for.
I say let her go to the zoning board and just go for the detachment.
Yeah.
Issue.
One thing you might wanna think of, Carol said that two D's each one of those are lots, am I correct? You might wanna bridge those two lots together as one D.
They're on the same D, but references two tracks.
Whatever two tracks, but they are reported two D's or separate. That's why I'm asking that.
Yeah, and you could, you could, you know, go D a piece of land here and another one in room three on the same D. That would be contiguous.
My other question is, I mean, I, I, I am on the zoning board, but I don't know the answer to this, is if, I can, I can apply for a variance. An actual plan?
Special exception.
Oh, a special exception.
Which one is this, Carol?
That's what the school and, uh, what, the property is north of the school, east of the school.
But my question is, I'm not gonna pay for an architect to do a plan and get it surveyed if I don't, um, if I can't get a variance. I'm asking a question. Do I have to have a plan and a survey before I go to the ZBA, or can I come, go in and, basically show them what I have here, and get an exception, and then do a plan?
Either, either variance, it says here, it says not allowed, in the village residential.
I understand that, I knew that.
Difference between a special exception and a variance.
Oh, it is a variance.
It is a variance.
You have, you have to look through the rules of procedure and see what they're requiring. For that, and if it says that you need.
We can't tell you, just give something on the napkin, that's up to them.
Survey, and then they can tell me how they.
Should probably need that, look anyway for a lane.
We need the.
The survey.
Yeah.
Why do you do a survey for? That's costly. Twenty-five hundred dollars minimum.
Well, because the way this is written, I'd rather have a survey done.
Also, they're gonna mean, not be the other plan. But I would think Henry Lane couldn't count the actual Henry Lane as part of the property, because it would be like, well, I mean, something like that. Can't use that as a building lot, so you'd have to, mine is, you'd have to separate.
You understand what you're saying?
There's so many.
Okay. Yeah, um, it says that in that agreement, the, the lot coverage calculation, would take your lot, and then it would subtract how the square footage that Henry Lane occupies, because that's.
You can't build on that.
Yeah, and that will be in the survey, not. Correct, that's what she's saying, but that would need to be, so that's the next step in the survey, and that's another reason for the survey.
I think the first step would be to have a survey.
Yeah.
I mean, I think she, she doesn't wanna spend the money on a survey, she just have a shot at getting it.
Well, that's the thing.
But she didn't mind.
Well, I'd rather not, if I, there's a way around it. I, I plan on getting a survey to figure out exactly where I get it. Spend money on it, to know.
Right, step in the record.
Then I'll just sell it to an Airbnb.
It's a good concept, but we, we thought, either get a ruling with the ZBA, or you have a different.
I'd, I'd go there, do the survey, go to the zoning board.
But do I need a survey before?
It can be contingent upon a survey.
I, I will look in their rules of procedure again, see what's required. You can always go in there and talk to them under the same. You can go and ask them what you need, if you don't know what you need.
Well, I've been recommending you to get a survey, because it becomes a problem later on.
Well, I mean, is it required? Is it required as part of the submission for Z, for a variance? I mean, town to know what's required, and it should be in the rules of procedure, what's required.
I mean, I gotta get one anyway, that's what's up, yeah, but I wouldn't see any need for engineers, designer. Yes, design, just, yeah, survey tells me what, what.
You have a survey, plot it on that, show the setbacks, and then you'll be.
They're so flat, I don't, they're gonna need a, uh, favorite of terrain for it, not that many properties. Make your biggest problem, you need over twenty thousand, fifty or thirty thousand. You would need a, all great terrain, but you don't need too small.
Thank you, please, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
By the way, and then we, I hear what's at the point, it wasn't arguing, if you were, you know.
Making my point to this.
Other business, we have an offer to purchase a lot in the industrial park, so that's on the agenda in two weeks.
What is that now?
The purchase and sales agreement has been received on a lot in the, in the industrial park.
Once I got through the plan.
For the selectmen to convey land, we have to have a hearing.
We have to notify the planning board, the planning board, we've been notified, has the right to give a recommendation or whatever, you know. It's not binding, but I don't even think you have to, but.
I don't think yet, do you really have to do that? I thought it was only on, the selectmen have the right to.
They can, they can sell it, even if.
Except, except sell land as a vote of the town. Right?
After, after a hearing by the plan.
Didn't the town grant, doesn't the town grant the selectmen the right to?
Sell the land, after they notify the planning board, then the planning board gets the way in. And then the board of selectmen have to have two public hearings.
Right, I'm, yeah, I got you.
Any public participation?
Did you get a copy of the, of the office?
I have it.
Yeah, I didn't make copies for anybody.
Because it's gonna be on the next agenda, I'm just thinking, we could send that out.
Well, what, only make copies for you now?
Yeah, if you wanna do that.
Right.
You're the only one who gets coffee?
Only when he's just supposed to ask and put it on.
Oh, I was asking, maybe even special.
He is special, but not that special.
Susan, do you have any public participation? Well, nice to see you. Does anyone have anything else?
I, I just have one thing. Um, tell me base camp, what we gonna do, what's going on with that?
Well, the board took a vote to, um, have him finish site plan with you, I haven't heard anything further.
Well, I was taken back in the, that was, that vote was taken in the spring, here we are, in the end of the fall, winter's coming, don't we think?
I mean, if you wanna have it next year, and we can have it.
I'm just asking, we took a, we, we took a vote, we talked to the attorney last week. I'm just asking.
As a board, can we look at some of the, um, issues that, that have been proposed to talk about? And not talk about the issues, but maybe prioritize them in, in, in far, as far as, putting them on future agendas?
The issues, what, what issues, you talk about, your, your list?
And the additions to it. But yes.
We never did that.
Does anyone have anything on that list that particularly important?
I didn't bring it with me, so, I mean, I, I've got it at home.
On next agenda.
Can we specific, how about loops, three of a separate zone?
So what, we have three areas in town zone general use, why don't we discuss those next, next meeting? That'd be, the question is, if we change the zones, we actually have to make specific changes, we need to sell them right away. In other words, if you just say generally one, generally two, generally three, have everything the same, and then later on, it's going forward. Yeah, that's a question, turning.
That we're gonna discuss the next week. I don't have my stuff yet, I don't.
Long way to Route Three, it's not a root three, not general use, not a more residential. As they ta- changed the zoning, something like fifteen years ago, the setbacks up one twelve, it'd be fifteen hundred feet back. From one twelve, after that, what's supposed to be general use, planning board has been painted.
That's all, that's still general use, you're talking about campus world and all that, that's all still general use.
Did I miss the volunteer law merger?
Yes.
How are they making it with, um, posing along the hotels on Route Three? They create like a group of people to approach? Have you heard anything about that? The hotels on Route Three?
Yeah.
It's kind of like a group of individuals that were gonna go and approach them about like long-term rentals in, in the building, in a hotel.
That was a little ad hoc committee that we had, discussed it.
Yeah.
It didn't really, didn't really go anywhere, everyone thought it was a good idea, they, someone, the money was.
They're doing it anyway right now.
Yeah, I know some of them do.
It's, I mean, they're not really made for long-term housing, so it needs renovations.
Who, who's the real estate person for the, uh, Busfield Park? What happened to, I thought that was the one you were talking about up here, like Gordy's, um, the real estate person.
Yeah.
Thought he, he came to approach the board and said that he had had central people that were interested. Nothing, this pain does. Is he aware of them, of the changes, by the way?
Yes.
So he had said he had a couple of people that were real interested, right? That's why you even started considering it.
Your motion to adjourn?
We'll wait for Carol to.
Okay.
So if we're gonna adjourn.
Right, she's handing out copies, right?
Yeah, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's still recorded, honestly.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so, and, 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 like.
You know, it was still being recorded.
You're okay.
That's why I let him speak.
You can get rid of it, watch. So he knows it's being recorded.
He doesn't care.
We know. We don't censor anybody, yeah.
He doesn't, that's why.
Where's the weekend?
Tell you what, I've never seen two lanes backed up path on all the road like I did this weekend.
It's everywhere.
It, it was backed up going both ways on all of them.
Yeah, you didn't wait it, we, we noticed one more.
Like, oh, couldn't even get out.
Oh, okay, shot. Thank you.